We will call the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our prayer for the morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. I would like to acknowledge that we understand that we're having some technical difficulties, and folks on Facebook might not be able to hear us real well, but we are working on it, and hopefully we'll have it corrected soon. Steve, can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Sure. Move to approve the minutes of March 9th.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We'll move on to our resolutions. First up, we have Andy Conrad, our county engineer, and standing in is Dan Becker. Good morning, Dan.
Morning, guys. I've got two resolutions for your consideration today. The first resolution is to purchase a new Caterpillar compact track loader. The second resolution is authorizing us to purchase a new cabin chassis dump truck for with hydraulics. And then we've got the permit list for this week.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for the new truck.
Thank you. You have some new toys. Next, we have Amy Lang Galvin, our county administrator. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. I have nine resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first resolution is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The fourth is cash transfers for various funds. The fifth is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts into the gasoline rotary fund. The sixth resolution is declaring Medina County property as excess property. The seventh resolution is authorizing the purchase of 7,200 gallons of regular unleaded gasoline for the engineering center, and that bid went to Great Lakes Petroleum at the bid price of 1.8587 per gallon for regular unleaded gasoline. And the eighth resolution is authorizing the expenditures related to an office for older adult sponsored senior day. That's going to be on Tuesday, May 18th, in the Medina County Fairgrounds parking lot. This is what Director Toth brought last week when she did her update to the commissioners. It'll include the drive-through operation with a health fare and a box lunch. And then the ninth resolution is approving claims for the week in the amount of $1,049,790.40.
Move to approve the nine resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And next, we have Holly Murin, our human resources director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have four rate increases, one at office for older adults and three in sanitary, two leave of absence, one at county home, and one in building department, one resignation in building department, and one probationary removal at county home.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next up is Scott Miller, our county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Scott.
I have three resolutions for you today. The first resolution is requesting proposals for the abatement design for the Medina County Courthouse project. The second resolution is authorizing advertisement for bids for Medina County Human Service Center Building Parking Lot. Estimated cost is $592,000. I'd like to thank Andy Conrad and Dan Becker. They put together the bid specs for this project. And the third resolution is approving agreement with the city of Medina for the purpose of production and broadcasting of meetings for Medina County Commissioners by Medina TV.
All right. Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments?
Is that the entire parking lot over there, like over to veterans and family services?
Yes. Yeah, it's everything. Yeah, it's the whole parking lot.
Two comments. A good collaboration with highway engineer Andy Conrad. We appreciate that. And also the city of Medina for our video services that they're performing for us. So we really, really appreciate both of them, both entities for doing that.
Absolutely.
Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Next up is Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jeremy.
Four resolutions today for your consideration. First is authorizing the transfer of funds between various sanitary engineer funds and county funds. The second is authorizing the sanitary engineering department to purchase a four-by-four single rear wheel-drive pickup truck with utility bed. The third is declaring the necessity of replacing existing water mains along Grafton and Marks Road located in Liverpool and Brunswick Hills Townships, and to enter into an agreement with HR Gray for professional design services. And the fourth is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into an agreement with Dixon Engineering for professional design services to design and bid a new elevated storage tank located in Brunswick Hills Township.
Move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? Jeremy, order of magnitude, what does a elevated storage tank cost?
I think the estimated cost for everything we need to do with this system was in the seven to eight million dollar range. The tower itself, I believe, is in the three to five million dollar range.
That's a big project.
It is a big project.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. We'll move on into our department updates. Richard Nelson, our building official.
Good morning.
Good morning, Richard.
Good morning.
Starting with our report that I believe you have copies of already, the value of residential is still up pretty good over last year, but commercial was down. So overall, still up in value for the month of February. Next line's down. The new home value slipped a little bit. And then down lower half of the page, we see we have a error there. We're still calling it February of 2020, so we're correcting the master copy, or already did actually, to be 2021, so it's correct. New homes, new dwellings for the month of February is pretty much right on average at 27. So that's quite good. Next page, the total residential projects is up, you know, additions, accessory buildings, remodelings, all that type of stuff that residential's up quite a bit over last February. But commercial is down. And commercial's down quite a bit, and so it's kind of drug down our receipts for the month of February. There's still, there's some stuff coming in, but it's still a bit slow. So the third page is year-to-date receipts, and it's down almost 2%. So it'll be interesting to see how that might change here over the next few months. And the remaining pages, of course, permits by townships. And that last page is details of commercial projects in February. Other items in the department, we had one of our inspectors has left us. He's moved on to Summit County. He lives in Summit County, so it worked out nice for him. And one of our clerks is still out with a medical leave till later in April. So we're a little bit shorthanded, but it's worked out all right because we are a little bit slow. So we're actually in pretty good shape.
Are you posting the jobs?
I have not yet. I'm working toward that and even maybe more accurately, working to see how things are going to shake out. Because we're in good shape with our two inspectors. Over the last five years, we've had either two or three inspectors, possibly over six years. And it seems that it's funny, three is sometimes too many, two's often fine, and...
So considering that commercial is down, it's working out fine that we've privatized commercial, correct? As far as inspections go? Are we still sending?
Plan review.
Plan review, plan review still goes out, right. Yeah, but the inspectors are always ours to do that. But the, you know, the commercial goes out for plan review, and so that's all working out. So no, I have not advertised.
So Richard, to Holly's question, what's the average turnaround for residential and commercial in number of days?
Three days for residential, and we remain at two to three weeks for commercial. We give the, we give the contract plan examiner 10 business days to get their items back to us, and that gives me, you know, a little bit of time. So we pretty much have been turning them around in two to three weeks.
Is everybody okay with switching back to the old computer system? Has everybody adjusted back?
Yes, so far, we're doing good with that. We do still keep finding things we want to fix, but it's nice because we just have Keith fix them. And so, yeah, that's working out pretty great.
It seems like the developers are happy with the residential times.
I think they are, but oddly, we've gotten several comments on the contact email thing that's on the website. There's people that appreciated how the LAMA system was able to give them reports, how they were able to get in there and get some information pretty easy. So we're getting comments that they want to know how they can do that with a new system, and it might not be quite as easy, but it's all there. It's all out there. But they got used to doing that with the LAMA, and now they're not happy that they have to re-educate themselves.
Change.
Yes.
At least the wait times are way down from a year ago.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very nice, very nice. And that is true, they do appreciate it. Some of the contractors come in and they're almost dancing a jig, you know. It's quite pleasant how happy they are, yes. Yeah, that's all I've got.
So, Richard, just year-to-date, our total estimated construction cost is 29.3 million as compared to 22.5 million for last year.
In February, correct. And the bulk of that is residential.
Right, right.
Yeah.
In both cases, it's residential.
Well, true.
So, I mean, there's still a considerable amount and considerable increase in construction in Medina County. And keep in mind that a lot of that is sales tax related, so...
Do you think commercial's down because of COVID?
I don't know. You know, last year, with all the COVID stuff, everything was pretty much right on par. It remained. There were some projects that got suspended that'll probably get started again, and so I think it'll be a fine year for commercial. But, yeah, last year, it was, you know, right on average. So I anticipate this year will not be held up with COVID, especially since things are getting better, and getting better fast as far as the COVID, from what I see.
Right.
So it looks, looks good. Yeah.
What I've heard, I guess, is the, it'll be a different kind of commercial. In other words, industrial and so forth will continue to kind of expand, but the office buildings and things like that, you're not going to see any growth there.
That's a good point. And if that's, if that was what you were coming up with, Colleen, I missed that point, but that point is very true.
Yeah.
Office buildings likely will, will not see too much of that.
There's an oversupply.
Yes.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of that, yes.
But the rest of the commercial contracts, like industrial.
Right. Mini breweries.
Yeah.
I know, we probably can become like a travel destination for breweries now.
Well, I think that's happening everywhere.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Pent-up demand.
Yes.
All right.
All right, Richard, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And Christina, is Christina out there by any chance? She's not out there? Okay, so we'll take her off. We'll reschedule Christina a different time.
Alex isn't here.
And Alex is not here. Okay, that's all right. We'll just, we'll continue to move on, and then we can switch back. So we have one notice of a looker permit filing. I'm just going to read this for the record. We received the notice of a new looker permit request for Ridge and Rail LLC, DBA Ridge and Rail, located at 6784 Ridge Road Insurance Township, Watchworth, Ohio. The permit classes are D1, D2, D3, D3A, and D6, and there will be no hearing on this. We're just providing the notice for the record. And let's move into discussion session. Scott, do you have anything you want to?
Just want to give you a quick update. So yesterday, we held the bond meeting with, the rating meeting with Standard and Poor's. It went very well. You know, we're currently at a double A+, which is just under the triple A rating for Standard and Poor's. I expect we'll probably stay at the double A+, but I'm hopeful that we'll get moved up. Also, tomorrow, we will have, there'll be five individuals from the courts that'll be visiting the Senate Courthouse for technology. That's moving forward. We had a turn page last week going over the, some of the details of the plans, the construction documents. So we're on schedule to get the fencing up around the parking lot and start getting the staging area in place late April, early May. And we also will be issuing bonds the week of the 29th.
Of?
Of March.
March.
Oh.
Yeah, so it takes seven days to get the rating, and then there's like a three, three or four-day time period where the bond counsel wants to kind of review everything. So it'll be the subsequent week. So we're in good shape.
What bond counsel are we using?
We're using Squire Patton Boggs.
Squire, okay.
Yeah.
Rick?
Mike Shard.
Mike Shard, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So what sort of announcements or directions will be provided to the courthouse personnel when the fencing starts to go up and things start to change?
So we've been working with the, with the judges. We've already talked about parking because the parking lot will be closed, so they'll have to park over in the parking deck. We've already started installing the electrical for the, to move the metal detectors and X-ray machines up to where the front, the front doors of the 69 building. We're, we've talked to a vendor for a camera system for the outside so we can actually monitor where everybody's parking in the deck and the walkways. We've communicated to judges where the court staff, where they'll have to enter the courthouse in the rear of the building. And we've also already started with the ADA compliant door openers, and we are putting together, Gilbane's putting together a bid package for the ramp that will have to be built on the front of the courthouse for ADA access.
And that'll be just a temporary thing, right?
Yeah, that's just temporary. Yeah, yeah.
So will the entrance into the parking garage facing the west remain open?
No, that'll be closed. So the only, the entrance and exit on Liberty and Washington will remain open, but the west will close, and it will remain closed.
And I've never gone in either one of those. Do those entrances and exits have those dividers separating the inbound and outbound?
They do. The city will be, is getting bids to have those removed.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, so I thought...
That'll be, that will not be good.
Yeah, I talked to Mayor Hanwell, and he and Nino and Patrick are putting together, put together the bid specs, and they're going to be getting bids, and those will be removed.
Okay, yeah. I think we'll get a lot of complaints and a lot of damaged cars.
Well, it's amazing because they've got the yellow posts there, and they're all marked up with paint. I mean, it's amazing how many people hit those.
Yeah, yeah, it is. So, okay, anything else?
Nope, that's all I had. Thank you.
Hi, Alex.
Good morning.
I'll tell you what, would you like to come up and talk with us?
Sure, sure, happy to.
So this is Alex Pavlov from the Ohio Secretary of State's office.
That is correct. Thrilled to be here. Sorry I'm late. I had some printer issues this morning, so we're, we've got old-school notes today, but happy to be here nonetheless. So, yes, thank you again. Alex Pavlov, I'm the Eastern Ohio Regional Liaison for the Ohio Secretary of State's Office. I think we've all interacted in the wild and here in the office as well. So in my capacity with the Secretary of State's Office, I cover 16 counties, including Medina County, and my job as a liaison is to help our office build relationships out in the community, work with boards of elections to help them conduct smooth elections operations. Liaison is a French word, meaning to thicken, usually traditionally applied to soup, so I like to think of myself as out there thickening the soup of government in the most efficient way possible. So some highlights from our office we've had. We've had a busy year. I'm going to start off, there are two main functions with our office. Everybody's familiar with our function as Ohio's chief elections office and, you know, what that all entails. But I'm going to start off the other side, and that is, that is our function is the front door of new businesses in the state of Ohio. If you want to set up an LLC or a nonprofit corporation, you file those articles in corporation with the House Secretary of State's Office. So some good news there. In the midst of a global pandemic, 170, over 171,000 people came to our office to file new businesses, which is an all-time record. This is incredible. This is good news. This is not a perfect economic indicator, but, but it does suggest that people are out there still taking risks and getting involved in something despite everything that we see going on. So that's wonderful news there. Just a local note on that front.
Alex, just a question on that?
Yeah, of course.
So 171,000 new businesses were filed. What's, what's normal? I mean, how big of an increase is that over what we've seen in the past?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's, it's, it's a reasonable increase. It's not, you know, an astronomical increase. It's not, you know, stop-the-presses kind of increase, but it is, it is, it is an increase nonetheless. So, yeah.
Important thing is not a decrease.
It is not a decrease, no. No, it is not, which is good news, which is good news. We use this system here in Medina County in partnership with the Economic Development Corporation when they were dispersing PPP funders and needed to verify, you know, the authenticity of a business. And so, you know, just kind of in an ad hoc way, I was working with Kathy and Bethany to track down that information. And so, you know, again, not a perfect system, but where we could be helpful there, we strove to be. And I think, I hope, if you talk to them, that they found it helpful. So any further questions on business filings? One small note there as well, we've also got a program called the Ohio Business Spotlight where we periodically spotlight businesses around the state of Ohio. We've spotlighted a couple Medina County businesses. I can't remember them off the top of my head, but they're wonderful businesses. So if you do have any recommendations, businesses that stand out, that deserve a little attention, please send them my way, and we will, we will spotlight them accordingly. All right, so moving on to the election, as you guys are aware, we had a little election last year. From what we can tell, and from what some of our friends have told us, Ohio did a resounding job in the 2020 election. Some, not our office, others have called it, Ohio the national model for how elections should be conducted. This is something we're very proud of. And, and if you look at how things ran in October and November, we were, we were lucky to get through without any, you know, sizable questions or concerns. Now, you know, luck was part of it, sure, but we'd also been, you know, training and drilling and practicing since, you know, January 2019. Secretary LaRose likes to say, it's an old army saying, I guess, but you sweat in peacetime so you don't bleed in wartime. And that was the attitude that we, we took into the election. That all having been said, we're, we're really just an administrative body. Elections, as you guys are well aware, are conducted at the county level by 88 county boards of elections around Ohio, and boy, do you guys have a good one here. The Medina County Board of Elections did a phenomenal job and saw a considerable, so everybody saw an increase in absentee voting and early voting. I'll dive into those numbers at the state level specifically, but the early in-person voting increase here in Medina County in particular was, was, I think, higher than surrounding counties. And I'm sorry, I don't know how that compares to last year, but, but I will say this, they were at one point doing about 1,200 voters a day, which is the same number that they were doing at the Summit County Board of Elections. So this is remarkable. And the Medina County Board of Elections did such a good job with their parking lot flow. They had, they had a phenomenal parking lot setup that we asked them to film a segment in our training, yeah, yeah, in our video training to new board members about how to conduct parking lot operations. So they did, they did a wonderful job. You all should be very, very proud. We never had any issues, you know, that we saw on other boards with lines to get in or line, you know, terrible lines, or lines to get to the drop box, or lines to get into the parking lot. They did a very, very good job there, and you all should be very, very proud of them. So moving back to kind of the 30,000-foot view from the state, we had, let's see if I get these numbers right, 59% of, about 59% of all votes cast were cast either absentee or early in person. Four years ago, that number was about a third, a little over a third, so that's a considerable increase there. On top of that, 94% of absentee ballots are returned, which was, were returned, which is another record. And we had an all-time low number of rejects, so flawed absentee ballots, you know, the ID envelope wasn't, wasn't right or whatever. We also had an all-time low number of provisional ballots, you know, that is people showing up to the polls without the proper identification, or showing up to the wrong polling location or anything to that effect. So, so very exciting there. Coming back to the local level, our office is also responsible for dispersing some funding to the county boards of elections. We dispersed a little bit over $387,000 from the Medina County Board of Elections for a variety of things. Some of that was funding from what we call HAVA funding, the Help America Vote Act. This is regular funding that comes through the Elections Assistance Commission. Over the last year, we dispersed it for upgrades to cybersecurity, physical security, and ADA accessibility. Off the top of my head, I'm not quite sure what the Medina County Board of Elections utilized it for, but it was some combination of that stuff. And then we dispersed some CARES funding as well for conducting elections operations in the course of the pandemic. And there, I'm not sure what the specifics were for the Medina County Board of Elections either. I think some of it may have been part-time staffing. You have, you have, you know, 150% increase in absentee, you know, ballots, right? You're going to need people to open those envelopes. So I think that's what it was. They're probably watching right now. Sorry if I got that wrong, guys. But that all having been said, our office's goal with those buckets of funding is to get that money to the counties as quickly as possible. We realize there's only so much we can do at the state level, especially in the election system that Ohio has that is very decentralized. The counties are where the rubber meets the road, and our job here is to empower them. So looking forward, we, you know, we've got more elections coming up. You know, right now, nothing is as high-profile as what we just went through, but we will have, in some communities, May primaries, and other communities, August primaries or specials, and then we'll all be voting for our local issues here in November. We've got a few legislative priorities that I just want to put on your radar that we're advocating for, that would help streamline the elections process. So one is the ability to request an absentee ballot online. In Ohio, you have the ability to register to vote online. In Ohio, you have the ability to register to vote online, which, which is, you know, in theory, a more burdensome process for the individual, right? Coming onto the voter rolls requires personal information, right? You have to verify your identity, and then once you're on the voter rolls, right, you've got that information listed, that's, that's where the absentee ballot request comes in. So it's just kind of a no-brainer, right? It makes sense for us to do and, you know, would save us, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but considerable cost in, in terms of, you know, printing these dead tree registration forms. So this is something we're, we're advocating for. I, I think both political parties would, would tell you simultaneously that this is a great idea and a terrible idea for all, all sorts of political reasons. The honest truth is, I don't think it gives one side a political advantage over another. I think the days of campaigning via, via elections laws, most elections laws are, are behind us. That having been said, everybody's got an opinion about elections laws. So that's something we're pushing for. On top of that, we're looking for, we're advocating for a change to Ohio's voter registration systems in a way that allows us to have a stronger verification process through voter registrations that come from the BMV. So federal law requires the Motor Voter Act, the Board of Motor Vehicles to register voters. This is done in a myriad of ways, some are productive and some are not. Oftentimes, it's a cardboard box underneath the desk at the BMV of voter registration forms that are handed out in packets that people get when they come to the BMV and they're scrawled in chicken scratch. And then once a month, the box is emptied and taken to the Board of Elections and the Board of Elections has to decipher these forms. And a lot of them are duplicate registrations, and so you're creating a cost in terms of, you know, person hours there. So, so we'd like to see this system brought into the 21st century where those databases are communicating. I'm not technical enough to tell you the specifics of that. What I know about tech, you could write on the back of a dime with a crayon, but this is something we're, we're pushing for as well. On the business filings front, something that's tangentially related that we're advocating for is reciprocity of Ohio's MBE certifications, minority-owned businesses or minority business enterprises. Right now, there's, there's sort of a patchwork of, of MBE certifications where county and local governments have certification processes that are different from, you know, state-level verifications. But let's be honest here, you know, one's ethnicity is, is in some ways an immutable characteristic, it's not gonna change. And, and it is burdensome on these business owners to, to require them to, to file three or four different times to prove their ethnicity. So, so we're looking to streamline that process as well. This is something we're working with both parties in legislature on as well as partners of the Chamber of Commerce and something I'm, I'm optimistic that I think is, is going to pass. So that's what's going on in our office. Oh, one quick note for you guys, you might like this. We've also rolled out a system we call BOE File. This is, this is a system that was created by legislation a couple of years ago that allows for online campaign finance filing for local candidates. Yep, yep, yeah, oh yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's, 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 yeah, burdensome, right? So that's live now, so you can file your local campaign finance reports online through our office. That'll count with, with the Board of Elections. Yep, yep, so another, another dead tree process that we've, yeah, streamlined, yep. So that's what's going on in our office. Good to see you guys, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just one clarification.
Sure.
If I may, you, you, you talked about the driver's license system and, and the voter registration system. So are those electronically, or is that the proposal, is electronically linked those up? So that if you have somebody that's registered to vote, you can verify they have a driver's license or vice versa?
There's already communication between these databases, but I think it's, it's improving that communication. Honestly, Commissioner Handley might know this better than I do, but he usually does, he usually does. But yeah, I, I think it's, it's improving that process. Again, I don't know the technical specifics there.
With this point, you, you share the signature files and the other identification. And here I think that the idea is, is when you walk in, you're getting your driver's license renewed and so forth, and you're not registered, that basically they can just take those data fields and put it right over to the registered, the, the database for the Secretary of State or, or the appropriate county level. So I think that, that's, that's the whole idea, that, that it'll be able to share downward. Of course, that's the movement towards centralizing the database of voter registration within Columbus.
It's, it's worth.
Because right now we're decentralized.
Yeah.
All the driver's licenses, I think, are coming out of Columbus, aren't they?
Right, exactly, exactly. So I think that that's that transmission of data, which is, you say, just instantaneous, just make sure the compatibility and it's secure. The idea that it's secure and that basically you're, you're not, you're not opening it up so that you've got, well, just say vexatious interference by outside sources is to the integrity of the database. In other words, you get hackers someplace, and I think that's, that's the main concern.
Absolutely, 100% dead on, and you know more than me as, as per usual. But it's, it's also worth noting that this system, you know, the, the way that, that we envision it, has an opt-out function, so this is not automatic. So if you're somebody that, say, has a religious objection to registering to vote, but you still need a driver's license, you can, you can opt out of, of being registered to vote in that way. So important caveat there.
Well, let's face it, you have your driver's license, you have a picture, you got a, basically a photo ID, you've got the signature, you've got all the other data and information there. Why couldn't you be able to register automatically as well? It only makes some sense, I mean, it makes, makes it a bit easier and actually, as you said, it makes, it makes it less likely, as you point out, all those forms that are sitting there in those, in those various departments, how secure is that? I mean, at this point, you're better off just go ahead and facilitate it and rather have, use the, the, as you say, the, the person hours to kind of shell through that. Here you've already have it, so.
Macro level, you know, in, in elections operations, there, there are a myriad of systems that are running on, you know, 1980s or 1990s paper systems, right? And we need to bring these into the 21st century. And so, you know, the campaign finance filing is one, this, this is another. So, so hopefully we're able, absentee ballot request are another, so hopefully we're, we're able to get there.
Now, the, the, actually, the reciprocity of the minority-owned certified minority-owned business, CCAO, we're, we're actually gonna be endorsing that, I believe, in our committee. Vern Sykes, I think, is the one that's working on that.
Yep.
Piece of legislation, vetted it through the CCAO, you know, various committees, and we're gonna be supporting it. Basically, it, it just, as Alex pointed out, it really is that you've got a certification process, one, one county or one place, it's gonna be the same no matter what, and it's just about reciprocity. That if a county wants to adopt or because of various, that they have targets and a certified minority-owned business, they just say, hey, if you're registered here, you're also registered within Summit County or Kaila County or Medina County, if that's what's required, yeah.
Did I hear you say that there'll be some primaries in August?
Yeah, some communities have that, yeah. Yeah.
Potential taxes, yeah.
Yep.
I, I do have a question regarding the, what you see as the impact of the US Census data coming in. Number of months late, and obviously the Secretary of State's gonna be involved in trying to figure out how to get, as well as the legislature, how to get, get everything in line with our districts, the mapping, the registrations, everything, as well as candidates.
Sure.
Being able to file for those seats.
Yeah, no, I think the impact is considerable. I think the United States Census Bureau should be ashamed of, of, seriously, of, of how late they're, they're coming to the table here. And, and you guys are probably well aware, but, but our office, in partnership with the Attorney General's Offices, has sued the United States Census Bureau because this is, this is unacceptable. To your point, there, there are a number of, of questions up in the air for, for all these legislative seats and all the, you know, prospective candidates for these seats, as, as well as, you know, folks seeking to run for United States Congress. And this is frankly unconscionable on the part of the United States Senate, excuse me, United States Census Bureau. So, yeah, no, there's, there's a lawsuit that's been filed. The people that get paid way more than I do are, are working hard on that, as well they should. And, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we see some resolution there.
So is the census data coming out at the end of March or is it delayed?
No, no.
They've already officially delayed it to August, I think.
They said, so the last date they gave, and this is when we decided to sue, they said the last date they gave was the end of September, which is, which is, you know, weeks after our constitutionally mandated, you know, September 1st deadline to have new district lines. Right, yeah, so.
That's just the legislative congressional, state legislative congressional. Don't forget, every community likewise, we have wards and so forth, all going to have to be done as well. So you start getting down to that level and without having the certified date on a block, on a census block approach, you're not gonna be able to actually divine up and have that equal population. So I think every, and of course, the, while we'll say the legislature and the voters have approved new processes for defining those boundaries and it's gonna take some time to work.
If they've done collect, if they're done collecting the data, what's the holdup?
You know, that's a phenomenal question and they should really tell us. They should really, like, yeah, right?
Yeah, I guess, so, good question.
That is, I think, one of, one of the, the main questions we're asking.
So what is the goal of the lawsuit? Did it accelerate the process?
Yeah, yeah, to get the process back, yeah, force them, get them back on track, you know, hey, work a weekend or two. I do, you know? And, and perhaps they are, right? But, but let's find out. Let's find out and, you know, just give us the data. This is, this is not complex.
Push back elections next year.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're, that many months, how are you going to, we do, well, we're not gonna do an early primary because it's a, that's only under presidential, but still, whether May is even doable remains questionable at this point.
Yeah, I think the United States Census Bureau's delay at this point is, is highly problematic. Yeah, we need to explore every option and we are to, to get that data out quickly.
Yeah, but for a May primary, you have to file in February.
Correct.
Yep.
So how are you gonna know what to file for if they changed it, if they're gonna change the districts? It's, it's, yeah.
Highly problematic.
Right.
Yep. Anything else I can answer for you guys?
Do you have a bill number on that? Let me see, you were talking about with the proposals that the Secretary of State is, is endorsing.
For, for which one or for all three?
All three, I was thinking.
I don't have them off the top of my head, but I'll give them to you.
Have they been introduced already or, or just in the process?
I think they're in the process, yeah. Yeah, if, if, if you had to ask, I think the, the MBE is the furthest along.
Right.
And I think, I think there's, and I don't know this for sure, and don't quote me on this, please, but I, I believe there, there are elections bills in the works in the legislature right now that, that may include some of these ideas. But yeah, I'll see if I can track down some bill numbers for you.
Anything else?
Well, I think that, obviously, the, being able to ask for an absentee ballot electronically, that makes a lot of sense rather than having to mail in something like that. It just, yeah, as you point out, you can register and I, well, I wanted to say, I'm not sure why we didn't do it last year, but I'll just say, I know why we didn't do it last year. But I think, obviously, that, as you pointed out, both parties, both sides are, are agreeing that that one probably will move quickly.
But if nothing else, it'll save a lot of paper and a lot of postage.
Yeah, precisely, and, and, and these are, you know, considerable costs, you know, for, for, for our office and for our county boards of elections as well. So if we can cut down on those costs, it's a good thing, and for the voters and the taxpayers as well. So if we can cut down on those costs, it's a good thing. Cut down the cost, increase the security and the confidence in the system, this is a good thing.
Right.
Yep.
Do you see any movement in terms of moving the last date that you can ask for an absentee ballot, though? Are we in that particular bill? Since you're going to be able to do, we ask it electronically.
Yeah.
That'd be an out, great opportunity to kind of realign that, as we know, it's too short a period to be able to mail out a ballot.
Yep.
Because of mail service. And we weren't able to resolve that last year, but I think for various reasons. But this, that would be a perfect opportunity, obviously, to include that provision, obviously.
Personally, I'm in 100% agreeance with you. I don't think our office has.
Taken a position.
Yeah, has not taken a position on that, and, and I don't know what's going on in the legislative process right now, but.
Okay.
Nope, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, we had a lot of residents that had to do provisionals because they ordered, but they never received.
Exactly. And the board, the elections officials pointed out that the legislature, we had a lot of testimony on that. It was agreement, but we couldn't get it done. And unfortunately, that would be the opportunity to do it if you're going to change the ability to ask for a, an absentee ballot, change the timeframe as to how soon before. It's at least to give enough time for the, for the mail to operate, because you're still gonna have a physical ballot by mail. Let me know that mail service, not, I'll say predictably is not going to improve any.
Yeah.
Anytime soon.
Yeah, unfortunately, yep, yep.
All right, anything else?
Okay.
Hey, I'll leave you guys, thank you. It's always nice to see you guys. I think you've got my contact info, but I'll leave you, I'll leave you with three just in case.
Thank you very much.
Always nice to see you all, thank you.
Let's move on in our discussion. Jeremy, do you have anything?
Not today.
Richard?
Nope.
Steve?
Yeah, I just, two things. Homeless Coalition attended that, the second one, the, or the one we were invited was over at Grace, church, their complex over there on 18th, their east campus. It was, it was a good turnout, they did it on Zoom as well as, as in-person. This is amongst the, if you remember Medina, Mayor Handwell had put this together. Largely, a lot of the churches love Inc., as well as Operation Homes and a number of others. They're moving forward, they skipped Cypos who, you know, kind of representing the Housing Network, was not able to be there, sent some input. I think you're, you're aware that they're trying to put together a study, a study group, come back to the commissioners with some recommendations. I think there is consensus among the community about looking at a drop-in shelter. But they've also, as part of their committee, and they've visited some other shelters, they went down to Worcester, came back with some very good observations on, on the Salvation Army Shelter down there, the need for case management. Also, in terms of the model that the person responsible, basically the person who's responsible for her own path of healing. In other words, there's some responsibility the individual takes in, in being able to that. And they realize that there's also abusers in the system, and they are talking about making sure that they, they've got, they start sharing their data from church to church and the various coalitions. But there is no doubt that COVID has had a significant impact, not only increased demand, but donations and so forth has likewise been a problem for many of the organizations. And I think that that's something that they're looking at how they can, you know, share their resources, how they can coordinate the, the support as well as kind of creating the ability to give the data to the Housing Network and so that we can successfully go out and, and obtain additional funding for the various institutions. So they're gonna continue meeting and networking. And I know our transit director was there on, on Zoom for that, so we'll be in a supportive role for that. And I, I would imagine that as we get the opportunity with some of the federal money, I know some of that can go to nonprofits as well as dealing where they've been impacted by COVID. And I think Operation Homes, I mean, there's, it, it, the numbers they were reporting of being for the various churches now in the hotels, our local hotels and being supported that way is, is actually pretty amazing. We don't have homeless on the street, there are actually a number of them in our hotels and being supported by the various church groups, but they're quickly running out of funds. And I think that's an area that we'll have to examine. And that's obviously working with the Housing Network is something, how you do that, not just short-term, but the long-term support. And that, that involves helping them, assisting them, the case management, providing resources. If it's a job training, if it's a career development, if it's a, you know, mental health issues or even substance abuse or whatever the, the causes. Took them a long time to get there, but it'll take them considerable time, but the idea is that it's temporary and transitional, moving them to a better and safer place.
Trying to focus on the root causes.
Yes, exactly. So I think there's, there's all that. And then it's nice to see, and that's the one area of the Housing Network, we're never able to, over the last number of years, it's been existence of trying to evolve the, well, I'll just say the faith-based, the churches and so forth. And this is already a network of the churches. So I think this is, this is a good, a, a good alliance, a good coalition starting to build. But I want to thank, you know, Mayor Handwell and the city of Medina for continuing to, you know, bring this forward. And they're gonna continue and I'll continue going to that and report, and we'll see what opportunities there are for hopefully some kind of funding, so forth. The other item, we had a NOAC board meeting, as you know, and one of the items in there was a, a letter, actually Grace Galucci had written to this legislature asking for the regional councils, the elect NOAC, MPOs, having control of the broadband dollars and having, basically, asking the state, yes, yes. Apparently she'd written a letter and the ARC, which is the Ohio, the Ohio Association of Regional Councils, which basically the MPOs and for the various large areas are asking the legislature with these broadband dollars to allocate dollars that would be
the legislature with these broadband dollars to allocate dollars that would be distributed by these metropolitan councils. So that was one area of concern. I'm not sure that NOAAAC being in charge of the broadband, distribution of broadband dollars here in Medina County would exactly be that beneficial to us. But obviously, we're, obviously, we've got questions on the state process as well. So at this point, I think we're, I'd keep that a note, just like, okay, this is something we need to, I I haven't talked much to Sharon or Daryl about it, but I don't imagine it's going to be too widely supported on the, I'll just, I'll just say amongst the Republican Caucus at least. More the rural base will have, don't have, that are under MPOs are not going to be interested. And I'm not sure those of us that are in the rural areas or suburban areas are going to be all that thrilled with having the largest, I'll just say, the largest counties in those MPOs kind of determine how the money is going to be distributed. Yeah, so I think there's some questions of equity, I think, in the distribution of those dollars. But there's a lot of money going through, it's broadband, as we just saw, if the new federal bill involves some of that. So I think that that question is is, it remains to be seen, that's something probably we'll have to monitor, just to keep track of what the state's going to do. If they're going to start doing it that way, we'll have to make sure that we got a seat at the table and and have some influences as to the the distribution of those dollars.
Yeah, I'm surprised, I don't remember that coming up in discussions.
Well, she sent a lot, I can send you, it was in the packet, actually, so, yeah, yeah, which I was kind of interested to see, like, wow, I hadn't heard about this. So, yeah.
I was not aware of it.
Yeah, okay, well, no, that's why I'm bringing up the discussion here, it's like, of note. So and likewise, they're trying to get certified for multi county strategic economic development plans, as you're probably aware. I think we had some discussion, Andy Conrad had had some comments regarding, some concerns regarding this, and I talked to Bethany and had conferred with her, actually texting, the long range, right? And we'd not be able, well, not the long range plan, but this is actually for economic development money. And we have a SEDS, we already have in this county since 2018 and annually reviewed, but we're not eligible for the funds because we're a single county. They will only fund multi county. So we'll, we agreed with the concept that we'll go ahead and apply, but we'll have to make sure that we obviously have a seat at the table or involved in the distribution of of those economic development dollars. So I think that's that's something, I had my conversation with Bethany on that Friday, last Friday afterwards, and also my text with her and Kathy, just to make sure that we're all on board and and kind of keep our eye on that, to make sure that if there are some federal grants going to be for economic development using these plans, that it's just not going to be dominated by Kyoka County, Medina County, but we don't qualify if we're a single county. So I just, but, you know, that was a letter that that went out, and we're, I guess, the application's going to go through to kind of develop a long range plan when it comes to economic development, much like we have a long range transportation plan. But this is for economic development, job hubs and those kind of things. So I think we need to stay focused on, obviously, representing Medina County's interest in economic development. But then that's all I've got.
Thank you, Steve. Kelly?
We had our meeting with the County Home Advisory Committee last week, and the friends of the county home were there. They have been given some options, and they are going to have a special meeting next week, March 24, to come to a consensus with their recommendation to us. So that should be coming shortly.
I saw an email from Amy on that, and I asked her if she could provide us with a five year look back on revenue and expenses.
Right.
And and also a forecast going forward. I don't know if they shared that or had that at the meeting, but the material she sent out.
Yeah, they had some forecasts for different scenarios, and, you know, a straight renewal, you know.
I saw that part of it, but I didn't see anything on really what the expenses have been and what they project them to be. So anyhow, I asked her to send that out.
I guess my suggestion, too, is we also, since we have a huge influx of, I'll just say, money coming in from the feds.
Yes.
That's a significant change, and that's a game changer in so many ways.
It is a game changer.
We probably ought to be looking at how that might even impact what the county home might be qualified, or as well as our other facilities, might be qualified for. And I think even the discussion regarding, as I understand, the bullet points for essential workers. And we have the.
Essential workers, absolutely.
Very essential workers there, we've not been able, we're not competitive in terms of the wages, and we probably ought to be looking at very quickly moving that up. Then also, in terms of forecast, would mean we have more expenses. We have to take a look.
And I would believe that I I will be surprised, I guess, as you say, if some of the huge capital improvement projects that are looking at there, such as the boiler, which involves heat, and windows, which involves insulation, could not be covered under some of those funds. Which then, you know, makes possibility of a a straight renewal with maybe some subsidies, you know, a possibility. So we'll see what the recommendation is. But we are getting an influx of funds that potentially is way more than we anticipated.
When I see the check, I'll believe it. Okay. I'm a little skeptical. All right, Kelly, anything else? All right, John, do you have anything? No? Rhonda, you have anything? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.